11:00 PM. And I want to welcome everybody here tonight and acknowledge that this is Dr. Camaro's first meeting with the Board of Ed as the new superintendent. And we're thrilled to have you here. And I think we've been here a little bit longer than that. And you will hear much more from her a little bit later on in the agenda. So let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Board of Ed members, tonight it is summertime, so that does tend to happen. But we do have a forum, so we can move through the agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on June 11. So we've motioned a good brand in seconded by Katina. Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes, please, if they can raise their hand. Abstention unfollowed. Okay, thank you. Got that, Shannon? Okay. And now we have time for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak during public comment? Yeah, this is public comment on the agenda. If you want to, it's open for a public comment now and then at the end of May. You want to wait till the end? Okay, maybe a little bit away, but okay. If you wait until the end of the agenda, you are restricted to talking about things that are on the agenda tonight. If you want to speak about some other topic that's not on the agenda, you can speak at the beginning. You're all set? Okay. So the board chairs report. I don't have anything really new to report since our meeting in early June. The only thing I want to note is that we will, the Board of Finance is having a meeting next Wednesday, the 6th of July at 7:00 PM. And at that meeting, they will be setting a date for a September referendum on the budget. And they will also be discussing within the mill rate that is established by the town council at their meeting in June. They will be discussing, the Board of Finance will be discussing any recommendations they want to make about our budget bottom line and the town budget bottom line. And remember that we are operating at this point with a zero budget. But we may be surprised by the Board of Finance next week. They could increase our budgets slightly. But we'll find out more next week. And the rest of the items, we're going to be talking in the very beginning. Okay. So we're going to pass it on to you, Dr. Camaro, for your first superintendent. Will you hold this, bring this up close? I'll hold it to you.
Good evening, Board of Ed members, district staff and community members. Well, you're present in those portions from home. As part of this superintendent's report, I will be providing an update on the trending course of student attendance and discipline data. And these are two areas of focus for our district. As a point of reference, our aspirational goals are that at least 90% of our students have an attendance rate of 95% or better. And to keep our chronic absenteeism rate below 30%. And for these 95% of our students, we need behavioral expectations and avoid disciplinary events that result in suspension. What you have in front of you is our attendance reports for the year. We have lots to celebrate. We made some modest gains in the daily attendance rate per building. And we have made study at 90% daily attendance as a district. We have also seen improvement in decreasing the chronic absenteeism. We have some schools that actually have double-digit improvements. We do continue to have higher chronic absenteeism concerns at the high school and Kinnick's Academy. And we will make sure that that continues to be a top priority for the upcoming school year. And we want to make sure there are different ways of supporting the teams in those schools, using data to be laser-focused and providing individualized support for students and families so that they can be comfortable on a regular basis. If you go on to the next slide. This chart shows you the subgroup data, the percentage of enrollment, percentage of average daily attendance, and chronic absenteeism data. We see higher rates of chronic accesses for students receiving special education services and students identified as high needs, which is an area that we need to further look into. In regard to student discipline, we have seen a decrease across the board of suspensions in and out of school as well as in colleges. As you can see, we have been able to steadily decrease these numbers from year to year. We're still, I think, we're still slightly higher than our 5% goal. For our student population, currently at about 7% of the student population receiving ISS and 6% receiving OSS. And actually, we look at the data slightly differently. If we all take into consideration students who are in kindergarten grade as well, the percentage increases slightly, respectively 8% and 7%. If you go on to the next slide. Also, to go on to suspensions and suspensions by subgroup, any gap that is greater than 10% should bring us pause. And this is the case for students receiving special education services. Even though the account for screening, about 20% of our student population in our enrollment, they represent over 32% of our suspensions. But that is definitely something that we need to focus on when we come school here. Our goal is going to be to develop this data to strengthen how we support students and the board to continue to increase the performance.
If you want to move on to, can we follow? Oh, yeah. I'll open first of all for questions and your comments and understanding that it's only your sixth day on, sixth or seventh day on the job. But does anybody have any comments or questions or things that they'd like us to, you know, learn more or impact more on a future session? Mary?
Yeah. Definitely, I look at the, this point data, you know, pretty contritiously as a board member. It's true, there is some improvement. But, I mean, at one point, we had like for the middle school, three times the state rate for suspensions. And, you know, that's unacceptable. So there is a movement, but we're still too high. And, you know, alarmed to see students receiving special ed services having that, you know, the incidence rate, which is again like, you know, they're 15%, you know, it's pretty high. It's 36% of all the expulsions, it looks like. And they're 21% of the student population. So I'm glad this is something that we're looking at together right now. And I just wonder if, you know, what types of ideas you formulated already or what you're exploring.
We met as a college in London and Houston, and we took a look at a lot of discipline data, with also attendance data and chronic absenteeism data. And we see a plan that we have students who have higher needs or the ones who we need to definitely further ensure. Our approach should be to look closely at the data rather than make assumptions and see what is possible for students to come to school or to have higher percentages of suspensions, both ISS, OSS and expulsions, or also understand the story behind each one of those single students. We do, as a district, actually employ a lot of resources and the, from my meetings with some of the principals, they already have in place some strategies that they have implemented, the teams that they've come together on a regular basis to look at the data and support students. However, we're seeing that some of these spaces, those are not enough. So it is the belief of the cabinet that we need to work closer as to what each single student needs for us to be more individualized with our support rather than having a general incentive program for this. Hoping that each single student is wanting to be impacted positively. We definitely need to look at who are the students behind this.
Katina?
Welcome to our district. Going back to my elements, I would appreciate if those tables were that next, next we would have a number of students. I think I did not have the one last one. We need to clear as before, they also have to be the population of school. Do you think that expulsion or disability? But for someone here talking about how they got sent together, you can say about 13% of them. Wouldn't that mean that finally, I think, for students, that, what that means? Because also that shows that if you're family, you don't have to.
Absolutely, something that we have already discussed is how we're going to be utilizing the data that we know that's accessible to us, you know, until we unite a brand. Well, perhaps what we might want to do is after you had time to get more into this data and you and the appropriate staff have some responses and challenges and opportunities to share with the board, it might be nice to schedule a longer conversation, a working session in the board. Maybe where we learn more from you all about what's behind these numbers and how the district is working to continue to address. It's not like you're not addressing these issues, but how we plan on making progress. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. So board members, we'll do that when, when they're ready to come to us with some more information. Thank you. There's something to celebrate.
Yes, there's pause to celebrate. I'd like to also speak to time to recognize Natchog School. There are some leaders who as a staff are being recognized for the second year in a row as a red, white and blue school. And we have the proud principal of the school here with us today, Janine Inamont. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. If you want to come up to the podium and just share with us how your school was able to earn this prestigious recognition.
We give you a round of thanks. Good evening and thank you. So Natchog School this year was recognized as a red, white and blue school. It recognizes civic education. And so we did an application and were recognized for a particular project that we did. We did a whole school voting process. So it was during, around election time at the ball. And we taught the students all about the voting process. We set up a, you know, booths for the students to come and vote in. We actually named the residents Fish in the main office. We have two Fish. So people gave different names that they thought might be a good idea. And we collected those names and we had a ballot in both languages. And the students were able to come in and cast their ballot. We talked about the bigger problems. We had fifth graders tending to, you know, the voting booths and casting the votes and everything at the end. And then big announcement, they had the postman who came in. Our mailman came in to cast his vote. And we brought that up to the, to the ballot table, so up to the voting box. So it was a pretty neat experience. The students learned all about it and they were so excited. Guabo and Twinkie are the names of our officials in the office. So if you're over by Natchog School, come on in and see them. Guabo hides a lot, but he does come out when we need him. It's fresh term to deal with. We have, I was called water tanks in the, in the school. And one of the students. So in any event, the kids were really excited to hear that we won the award again. And more importantly, learning that student voice and voice in general in the community in and of all the living people. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Perhaps we can do that in more schools in the district. Thank you and congratulations. And then now we're on to the entry.
Well, I developed a framework that I found as part of my entry plan that is called SOR, S-O-A-R. And it entails seeking to understand our stakeholders and data, opening the worst of relationships, assessing strengths in areas of growth, refining priorities, action planning and executing a plan. And even though I'm going on to the next slide please, even though my official start date was July 1st, I have been visiting schools since May with the goal of getting to know people, understanding their experiences and perceptions, gathering data and starting to build relationships. Here are some of the pictures of some of the school districts, graduations, community events that I've been able to attend. I really appreciate everyone's warm welcoming and information that I gather from visiting schools, from speaking to our staff and our community members. This information that we're going to be using is to guide our efforts moving forward. And so it's really been an exciting time.
Thank you. Do people have any questions or comments? I know we're going to be talking about events and things that we're going to be doing as a district that you will be a part of later on during the special events on the agenda. But I do want board members to encourage to work with Dr. Camaro to help introduce her to these different organizations and individuals in the community. Some of you have already started doing that, but the summer is a good time to get out and meet people. And it was very nice to see you even come to our 4th of July. Who brought us here in town? Thank you. A lot of fun. And the plan is online for people to view.
That is correct. I actually remember something that you did this year that they had actually taken a look at my plan. I'm so happy to be there.
Okay. So before we move on to committee reports, if you'll give me a moment to use my privilege as the chair. I forgot during my report to just publicly acknowledge that longtime member of the academic community here in town who was a principal at Natchog, Rose Robashow Beeson or Beeson, passed away recently. Her obituary was in local media. And I just wanted to acknowledge her passing and reading more about her, understanding her long commitment to students in the district. She was a lovely person and contributed a lot. Just wanted to know if that helped. Thank you to Rose and her. And now we're on to committee reports. And the first one is finance and product. And it's over to you, Martin.
The call, fair well received, was our last official meeting. We discussed the budget transfers. We discussed the, our end of the year, our potential end of the year, which we will now go over again next week when we have our plan on that. How did we work on it? But is there anything significant that I missed? No?
I mean, we're going to be talking about some of it when we talk about the budget too later on during discussion items.
If I'm correct, the transfers were approved by Dr. 166,509?
Yes.
And so everyone knows, 115 of those were approved before we moved forward to the meeting. And you'll see in the budget transfer document that we've added about 50,000 of transfers since then as.
Because we did the water units. You may want to introduce yourself. Because people are used to seeing Rita. So why don't you introduce yourself to the cohort and let people know what we're doing now?
I am Shannon and I'm the associate director of plans. The chairman for the data reader left.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the 50,000 extra transfers, if not in one transfer, it's several with professors and it's to close out the year to repay the invoices. We also know that when we created field at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, it was just a projection. So as it goes coming in, the account may not have enough to cover the lock bill. So we are moving over from variable balance from another account to cover the, the quota for fields. But we cannot go on to the fields unless we pay the bills.
And for people listening, we try not to talk in code when we say POs, we mean purchase orders.
Correct.
Thanks.
And for those, and I separated it out from day to today's day, July 1st of the January report was, was out to you. Those films that we already pulled in because a lot of time that got 116,000 in 2018. But I really have to, we really think we're one of the long time.
Anybody have any questions, Shannon? No? Okay, thank you. So any questions or comments? Okay. Personnel, Ryan is going to be calling.
Personnel, Matt, we chose the hit. And it's from this meeting. We have department update on June very much. We listed, Kim was able to give us information at the time of vacancies, which included two at the childhood center, let's say, special ed resource teacher, two. The ones I'm going to mention that are the new and early and high, if you can find those candidates, would be a specialized program teacher provides, transportation specialist, campus safety, HVAC, cat network, system administrator, a couple of those repositions that are in central office. And we think that was something that needed to be done. Let's see, we had some summer programming vacancies? Yes.
Yeah, Kim. Paula, I actually, you referenced in the meeting. So if you look at the presentation that you're referencing earlier and I think it's slide five. Okay, I'm really sorry.
All right, and then, let's say, okay. Department update, that one?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, they weren't dated on one sheet. Okay, Paula. Sorry.
You're only human. I knew that some of those positions weren't lost that we were.
Oh, okay. Not hiring more or higher? So to bring us back up to date. We have one vacancy at the child center, early childhood center, one at Natchog. Five vacancies at the window, one in Sweden, one in Charles Farrell, one in middle school, five, two at Phoenix Academy, one at the middle school, one in central office, one district wide and one department. So we have them. But those are the one fourth. We also discussed donations from historians, the children. So we have a home, a 11, a joint, I'm sorry, a 10, like 22nd and 5th with the hit. And I believe tonight, nobody would know where the postponer shop would be. Although.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions, Mary?
Just to confirm, we did hire the HVAC specialist. Thank you.
I thought I saw the announcement about that, so I was a little confused. Anything else for Paula? Thank you, Paula. And then ad hoc elementary school consolidation committee. We're back to you, Mark. And the people who do read the chronicle, there is a good story on this on the front page today.
Reading for the proper days, folks. We discussed our grant application to the state that has been submitted. Jeff Fodolski, one of our consultants, who do the document for the committee. We put some budget assumptions in there as required by the state. There's no decision made about budget and it won't, it will be typed out under the building committee. The official building committee is formed, which is the out of the referendum. The referendum is that vote. Budget assumptions do include a state reimbursement of 80% on the main building and possibly an additional 50% on a portion of the building allocated for special ed needs. So that is, our intention is to keep the potential pound portion of the expenses below 30 million. So we're hoping for those favorable numbers that we have that we will be able to build an excellent facility for a really low cost for our taxpayers. We also discussed the land purchase. That cost was included in the grant because we're hoping for state reimbursement consideration, even though maybe it'll be for the referendum, we think. The land purchase is being handled by the town staff. So we have to wait for them to give us some information. Then we also discussed possible scheduling of future programs for the town council, the board of finance, and fellow presentations such as Thursday. And with that, two committee members, we're here on that. And I believe it'll be discussed later on today. And then in our board meeting today, we'll come back. And there was finally a discussion about maybe the need to create a PAC, coordinate the get off the vote campaign. This, as an elected school board, we're not able to activate the campaign for a yes vote. So the need would be to form a PAC that literally have that in the previous decisions. That was moving.
Hi, PAC, Mark means political action today in case anybody is confused about what that means. Because we're not allowed to expend any district resources on advocating for approval of the, of the school. We can tell people when to vote. We can educate them about it, but we can't tell them how to vote. The other thing is, again, the. The other thing is, again, the application that went in on June thirtieth to the state, and that's the state's deadline and with an annual deadline, so we were trying to meet that deadline. The consultants told us that they expect we'll hear by middle of December?
Right.
Yes. The middle of December. So if the voters approve the proposal on November fourth at the referendum, and we get approval from the state, then we can begin to move forward on this. Are there any comments, fourth members, questions? It's daunting. I mean, we're going to be having a referendum on our budget in September and then a referendum on the elementary school consolidation in November and include in addition to municipal elections. So there's going to be a lot going on. Okay, there's nothing else, then I'll turn it over to Mary on curriculum.
Yes, actually, I can't wait until last week, July first, was it? And we discussed physical education and the health curriculum. We did get to view a very interesting presentation that Zach Knopf, that the athletic director had compiled. He was not able to give it in person, but Neil Watters took us through it. And we learned that the school health requirements are set by the national health education standards. They're also promoted by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Instruction is skill-based and age-appropriate. And I'm just thinking ahead a little because the minutes are going to be on soon. There is also an interesting interface with the cells competencies of social and emotional learning through the health curriculum, which I thought was very positive. The professional development is not just playing games. There are demonstrations and calibrations of different levels. Sounds like there's a very good cohesion in the whole, throughout the whole district. And what these there were some board questions and we learned there are no exclusions from classes and there are many different levels and many different types of activities that children are able to access. In September is our next meeting as a curriculum committee. We do try to set a yearly series of themes and it will be very nice to work with the new superintendent to see what themes are best for which months.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, appreciate all the committees doing their work and, yes?
Well, this, the presentation being on our website was so excellent. And sometimes parents don't want much about, or probably like we want the supportive issue for someone who has a any lesson, just a suggestion.
I think it's up to the athletic director, I suppose. I don't know exactly where it would go.
Well, we central offices here and they've noted that maybe something worth figuring out where it go on the website. Because I don't see Zach here, he's just not at the meeting.
I mean, it could be a kind of attachment, I think, so if you want to go through the curriculum committee, but I don't know how that works exactly.
Any comments on anything that we're recording? Dr. Gamaro, anything you can say?
No, we're looking to, we're looking to the post, really mission of the complete break. I haven't checked whether or not we currently publish any curriculum materials. A lot of stuff was available.
Thank you. I'm sure like what's on the website, the design of the website, the look of the website will probably be something that gets brought coming. As the new superintendent moves forward, it may have like human values. Okay, so we're onto discussion items. We have two discussion items tonight. One is the budget and the other is outreach and engagement on the plans for the elementary school consolidation. So I know that Dr. Gamaro has been working with staff on some information with us for us to discuss and I can hand it over to you.
Thank you. I will be giving the board some updates as of June thirtieth. I will also summarize where we started, how obviously we monitor back here the strategic actions we've taken is on the challenge is we still continue to monitor. So the major update is that through the process of raising our budget in late April, we're going to be able to set aside close to two percent of the budget, which is nine hundred thousand twenty-five hundred eight. And so we anticipate having a revised number for the finance and housing meeting next month's day. We're continuing to close purchase orders and finances and things of that nature. So we may have a different number for you, a revised number than this week. We have also posted a sub-budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school here so that we continue to run the operation. As you know, right away if the purchase orders are coming in, we need to pay our staff. You know, there's utilities and we can care of. So if we were for us to be able to run the operation, we have posted a number of the budget as of June thirtieth, being with the understanding that we need to relax that. We'll go to the next slide. So as a review and reminder of how we have arrived here to this moment, as you know, the board originally recommended a five point eight percent increase, totaling approximately three million dollars, which is operating under the assumption of a zero percent increase to be here for the fiscal uncertainties regarding the referendum and other income sources. So in response, the interim cabinet, which I'm very grateful for, and they we start how bad connection wages are going to pause because they've been working nonstop for the past six months. So I am truly grateful for the work they have done. So in response to the potential zero percent increase, they posted that in April, mainly in regards to expenditures, we're going to go getting to that zero percent increase. And we currently spend two million eight hundred sixty-four dollars, which means that if we do not receive additional funds from the budget referendum or don't have additional resources, we may be looking to having to reduce an additional hundred sixty-one thousand dollars from our budget. Well, going to more detail as to where these reductions have come from, starting with the department is full cuts in the amount of sixty thousand six hundred. And these came from, we only live in a day or two. Also, we had fifty staff reductions in the amount of five hundred eight thousand four hundred forty-five in tuition arrangement of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. On this slide, so our assumptions were making based on the data and expenses from previous years in these different funds that were able to apply to the next, to next year's budget. So we anticipate an attrition savings of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. With ninety-three thousand would be from certified staff and a hundred fifty from non-certified staff. We received in early May a medical reimbursement, the amount of three hundred and four thousand dollars. And we currently have one point eight of a two point percent set aside. Eventually, the budget freeze and the reductions that will be starting in April. On the next slide, in addition, we have received recently a two-year legislative grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we will be getting the special education expansion grants in the amount of four hundred twenty-three hundred thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars. So all together, it adds up to a total of expenditure reductions in the amount of two million eight hundred sixty-four dollars, which again, it means that we may need to, if we don't receive additional funds, to further reduce our expenditures by an additional hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. So on this slide, there are a few areas that remain at risk. Again, if we need to make additional reductions to get us to the zero percent. And these are some of the areas that we unfortunately are working at potentially. We have seven health community acquisitions. We are considering the old gray sports and high school clubs and middle class. Where again, we monitor closely what is going to happen in the referendum as well as with some funds that we get from federal grants. We can go to the next slide. This is something that we're continuing to monitor. We have at all funds set currently on hold in the amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety dollars on grants. And if those funds are eliminated, we are going to be looking at an additional loss. And so this is something that is really looking that is very concerning and we're continuing to monitor and waiting to hear more from the federal government. So final reflections in summary with maybe some strategic reductions and have reduced the proposed increase by point eight percent, budget to point three one percent. We have to further reduce our expenditures by an additional one hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, which really can impact some staffing and opportunities for students. We continue to monitor federal banks and the potential impacts of that. And we're waiting for the September referendum and final decisions are coming. So there should be final for the budget. So we have loss here and before, the interesting new questions are coming. And the one with the board, the leadership team, again, that we interim cabinet, who the staff or the partnership and the commitment to our students. And we're really working literally nonstop over the past six months. Looking at multiple ways of how we can reduce our expenditures without impacting our students and our staff, which has been very difficult. So this is not in this small unit.
Right, so, thank you. And as folks remember, we talked a little bit about this at our meeting in June. Said that we'd come to ask in July. As people know, decisions have to be made to go through the proper notification of staff and bargaining units and things of that sort. So a lot of these decisions have been implemented. And there will be some more decisions to be made as we learn more. Another sort of question mark factor is that if some of these federal funds don't come through, given all the, what's happening in B C and all the threats about this not being funded and that not being funded and this being paused and whatever. The governor of Connecticut has announced that there will be a special session. And this morning on public radio, he said, he's thinking probably September. And he did say that there were a couple of things that would be considered in the special session and what to do about loss of federal funding for programs, including education and Medicaid. And that'd be two big ticket items that they address. I don't think you should expect to be made whole, but there may be some, some relief that could be coming to communities like ours if that happens. So many question marks right now about what to expect, that like to open it up for discussion and let people weigh in on things, ask questions, make suggestions. Really, now's the time to speed up and feel thoughts on this, to drown the worry. Go ahead. Paula, Mary?
I was feeling a bit upset and actually discovered what's happening. They're all our larger than this for children and elsewhere. So I wonder if there are issues. So I would say that at least fifteen positions have probably been.
That is correct.
To know which one for me, I don't have that much to do about, which was made where.
So these decisions, and I believe they were shared by Mr. Watters previously. But these were fifteen staff reductions. It included a mix of vacated and non-renewed positions. So there were four building subs, four little teacher positions, one long-term sub and one Gera at the high school. Three as their funded academic tutor vacancies. Two administrative assistant resignations in central office. One system identity position in the month, third subposition. But these were positions that didn't result in individuals being terminated. There were positions that were not filled. Maybe individuals who left the district. No, and that's why I think it was important for us to, pretty much review and revisit, for these numbers to be fine.
And so remember, the acting superintendent was working very hard with the central office team to make sure that if at all possible, we didn't have to do layoffs. That we were just not going to fill positions or continue positions. It's very difficult. So if we actually do layoffs, we actually have to spend money on employment and that's two, which actually sort of cuts into the penny savings from those positions. And I know Neil shared, shared all that with us earlier on, if you may recall. Anybody else have any questions? Mary?
Yeah, I mean, this idea about the zero budget is, you know, very concerning and, you know, so it continues, which it has in the past in this district. You know, so it's attrition multiplied and, you know, you know, it's just very depressing. But I do want to say we're below zero actually, and we still have to get the answer about that money that was in our budget approved last year. And I would like to do this as soon as possible. So that's, that was originally five hundred forty-three thousand or something like that. I'm not sure about that accounting practice that heard to supposedly send us a hundred thousand. But I think this all needs to be laid out, what's happened and whether that's a sufficient replacement for that money. Before they make a budget and tell us what we're getting, we have to finish, get what we deserve this year. And what was voted on, just to clarify.
Right, so for people who are following this, there was a decrease in funding from the state after our budget was approved mid-year. I mean, during the course of the year, under state law, where our budget is not allowed to go below what it was the year before. So essentially, if we get less money, we didn't go below that zero amount. And so we do need to get an answer to that. Where does that land us? And how does any money that came in during the course of the year count against that? Such as the solution that the board of finance gave us, which was just not to pay toward our health benefits, for example. How does that all add up and does it add up to completely replacing the money that was lost? Thank you, Mary. I'll work with Dr. Gamaro to get guidance from our legal counsel now that he's here on board. You have to lead her anyway, so. Any other comments? Any questions, suggestions? I know we've heard about this repeatedly over the past couple of months. Okay.
I was thinking about seven more, uh, additional positions. Well, then, I mean, some, some of our kids come to school and succeed in other schools. In class and school. I mean, how, when I say barely of a time, not one, those poor property. Um, pardon, our work is.
Well, I, I will put the question out here. How much of this do we want to share before the board of finance meeting next week for the board of finance members? So they really understand what has already been done and what. I mean, I know we've repeatedly shared this information, but we, it probably can't hurt to share another round of information with them before the meeting on sixteen, um, fall.
I would say we be as clear as we can as to what we're, we're at a loss for. You know, the middle school sports, um, may not sound all that important, but let's remember that this is where our kids get some expertise and get excitement for going up to the high school and participating in those activities there. So it's, it's really important to maintain these programs.
So, Mark.
Well, rather than focus on exactly what we're, what we might try to say, we all know that way that feedback comes back to us.
Right.
Uh, but I'm certainly thinking that we could make a strong case for the fact that we originally came to five point eight through extremely creative budget and hard work. We reduced that, our budget, down to now that it's only, we're only looking at a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars or a point three-one. Then we could make a case for the board of finance that, like I said, our budget, it should at least give us that point three-one. Uh, you know, we have more than, nothing halfway, if you will, that we made a, our answer enough to go with five point eight. What we, what we said we needed, uh, now we're now doing the, we've cut five point five out of that and we're just looking at point three-one. Either they attach to our budget proposal or that under 200, we should certainly come from the business advice. And maybe like a strong case for the work being done, but that's where we'll be.
What do you both think about that? I mean, sharing, not, not, not getting it. We do not want to get into a conversation with the board of finance about cuts. Because that's not their business. Right, it's the business only of the board of ed about what cuts get made. But we can't tell them how, where we're short and what we've done. Because I do still think many of them do not understand the cuts that have already been made.
Really?
Yeah. So maybe a clear one pager that doesn't get too detailed, but getting it to, into their hands before next Wednesday. So that those of us who are at the meeting next Wednesday aren't sharing it with them for the first time when we speak during public time, you know, but. Mary.
Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, with what, the way Mark framed it. But I mean, I do think that then they just want us to do this every year. I'm not very optimistic and, you know, there's a lot of levels to the way this process works.
Agreed. Until we have a town charter changed, though, we're starting with this process. Any else?
I remember also, uh, a member session when we went to finance about saying, okay, we give it type of please then next year that people support people expenditure and maybe just to be. So also clarifying some of those questions they have at that time. Especially because that's what some people are focused on. What are the questions?
I don't quite understand what you mean about the per people.
Yeah, they were saying, uh, I mean, what are the numbers and what was, uh, what was talking and saying? Um, then that we cannot increase next year the budget. So next year it will have to be the same, yes, or the same, well, yes, or the same. And they, they were attributing that to the, um, people vacation, things like that. So I don't know, we not have a confusion of what the goal is and what the requirements are.
I think we've made it pretty clear and they know, they've been told they can't go below zero by state law.
Mm-hmm.
They just complain about it, that's all. And, you know, it's, they want to pretend, they, they like it if it wasn't that way. They think if we have fewer students or a change in student population, then we shouldn't be spending as much, but. I mean, it's hard to explain to somebody who doesn't want to hear. Paula and I were both on the board of finance. And I was the chair of the board of finance. And, you know, I will just say that I think it's our responsibility to give them this information before next week. So they can't say they didn't know. And they still may say they didn't know. Okay, well, we'll work on that then. Thank you. Sorry, this was some, we have to keep talking about this. We'll be talking about it more. Um, uh, so the next item is outreach plans for the proposed elementary school consolidation. And I think you have something to share with us. Get started or not?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, as I mentioned previously, I'm with the cabinet and we've been, um, looking at different ways of how we can get the word out. Uh, so some of the events that I will be attending and also members of the cabinet as well as, um, board members, um, that play anything, uh, will be at the Latin Multi-Pulmonary Festival this Saturday. Um, definitely I will be at the, um, Thursday on the seventeenth of July, August twenty-first, as well as on Saturday, August twenty-third at the family community expo. We will have a table, we have developed, uh, we have a draft form of a flyer with information that is concise and will get the attention of our families, um, to get them to learn more about, um, the elementary school consolidation planes. Um, we also are thinking about taking advantage of, um, where we have a Catholic audience already. For instance, going into summer school program, um, perhaps bringing in lunchtime information sessions, um, having refreshments of the last day or something to that effect. Uh, we're looking at different, um, events that are happening. The Wyndham Recreation, um, Center, where are some of their activities that we can perhaps stack on ourselves, or bring ourselves to and bring information for the community, as well as the Wyndham Senior Center. Um, we also are looking at utilizing the summer welcome activities that are going to be taking place throughout our schools. Um, so we are getting information from the principals as the blood flows, look like, and what are the dates? So that we can again have information sessions and provide opportunities for new members to ask questions. Um, we also have a open house this, um, in August. Um, we perhaps are considering visiting another, doing another visit to a radio show. Um, and we have a variety of other, um, ideas, but the overall sense is that the more information we can get out there to families, um, to do it in person, to do it in, of course, even multiple languages, but to make ourselves available where they, they are already. And so rather than having them come to us, us going to them and providing the information, providing opportunities to ask questions and learn more about why as a community, we would want to bring new elementary school and this kind of program. I think that we need to educate the community, um, so that they're aware of what it's that they're going to want.
And in addition, we also talked about, um, having some other community forums, whether they're in person or online, um, because they were pretty well attended the four or five that we had, um, in the spring, before we put things on hold for a couple of weeks. So we can, we can talk about all of that. Um, but I guess this is a way of saying that the board will have to be engaged in this process and volunteer to be out there at these events, probably the people.
Yeah, and have to have, um, live, um, social media events in Facebook and TikTok, um, that many of our, um, participants.
Any others who want to share? Okay, so as we get through the summer and into the fall, I'm sure we'll be talking more about schedules of, of events. But, um, Dr. Camaro already shared that we will have a table at the Thursday festivals, at the expo on August twenty-third, at the Latin Fest, this Saturday, the twelfth. So board members who can show up at those events and be at the table and circulate among the people who are attending with flyers and information, um, please plan on doing so. And, um, particularly, um, for this Saturday, people who speak Spanish would be most, I'm looking at you. Spanish, but maybe Alicia will be different known to. Well, anything else on that topic? Okay, um, so now we're going to go into executive session. Um, I would, which means that we will be leaving the room and having an executive session in private. And then we'll come back in and reconvene the meeting. And I'm sorry for any convenient inconvenience for folks, but I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at eight oh-two P M for discussion of the maintenance comment. Okay. We're going to the executive session.
So if you don't want to wait for the action items, if you have this agenda, I perfectly understand that I, we can't reconvene in the meeting at both medical personnel and deal with them. And then we won't have a forum if they have to take away. Yeah, I'm just saying, you don't need a crowd.
Thank you.
... board members. But when we're told by our parliament in Barrein that if we start the meeting with a forum, if we lose people, you can still continue to have... But in minutes we'll have to note, Chan, that we're going to see two people who are from... One whom has gone into... We don't need to write this in a minute, but just so everybody knows, Katina went to the hospital and Mark was cleared to go home and Neil is making sure he gets home safe. So we're on to action items on the agenda and I would entertain a motion to approve the maintenance contract agreement. Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion except that we know that this is with agreement? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve budget transfers of $166,509. Motion made by Mary, but seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? We got a good explanation earlier on in the agenda. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you for your work on that. All those in favor, please indicate by raising their hand. Okay. And I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary use of North Wyndham School roof project funds to fund the cost of the North Wyndham School septic wet well emergency replacement. I'll take a motion on that and a second. So move it... Sorry. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Brendan. Slide is here tonight and has waited around. If we have questions about that, but I know we've talked about it at fair amount of meetings. It's... These two next things are major capital improvement projects that must be completed as soon as possible. So... Any other questions for slide, Mary?
So if we vote tonight, the money is there. Is that correct? Or does there have to be a calendar meeting? That's my one question.
Right, so we just sort of transfer that money, use it for this and then later on deal with the how it gets replaced. Right. Okay? Maybe the whole idea was to try to expedite this, yeah? Okay. All those in favor of the project, please indicate by raising your hand. The motion... Yeah, thank you, approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve temporary use of North Wyndham School roof project funds to fund the potential replacement of rooftop H vac units at Barrein. Second, motion made by Brendan, seconded by Mary. The same situation applies here as the previous motion where funds are available and we don't need to go to town.
That's right. Other than this, if it puts a position, we have to go to town. Okay. Okay, that is okay. That one's going up. But most of the... Yeah, we have approved. I want...
Because being used for a different facility.
Correct.
Yeah.
Real, real... Second.
Okay. Okay, but we have board approval and that way, when you're ready, we can get the board's plans.
In your... Sorry. If it's over, go back. There's probably... We need that.
Anybody have any other questions for slide? We appreciate you sticking around. Thank you very much. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes, manhoods. And now we're on to people comment and women who wanted to speak is not here anymore. So is there anybody else who wants to speak during the public? Okay, I want to thank everybody for their help with the recent situation involved that happened in the hallway at the last event. As I said to Dr. Camero, this will be a memorable first meeting for a number of reasons. It'll be a good story to tell. Unfortunately. So without further ado, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:44. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.